Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
I'm honored to welcome everyone to the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee meeting. It is Tuesday, September 19th, at 8:30 a.m. We always open with public comment. Is there any public that would like to address the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee this morning? Seeing none, we will close public comment, which brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any items that need to be pulled?
Nothing on there.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda passes. That'll bring us to item number three on the agenda, Circuit Court, Child Care Fund Annual Plan Approval and Appropriation. Wayman?
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve the Child Care Fund Annual Plan for 2017-18 to appropriate $27.7 million to the 2017-18 Child Care Fund budget to authorize the Board's need to execute contracts with the proposed local agencies, the grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, approve grant extensions and changes within 15 percent of the original ward, subject to final review of the documents by corporate counsel. Each year, the 17th District Court, Circuit Court, Family Vision, and Kent County Department of Health and Human Services are required to prepare a plan showing how the child care fund dollars will be spent by each agency, the plan in-home and out-of-home placement costs for children at risk of abuse or neglect, as well as children determined to be delinquent. The law provides that each county will receive a reimbursement from the state of Michigan of 50 percent of the annual net expenditures for certain costs related to placement and efforts to reduce placement. Kent County Network 180, the 2nd 17th District Court, and Kent County DHS have partnered for several years to create a system of care for children in multiple systems. As part of that effort and the Dwayne B. federal court settlement between Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and Children's Rights, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and Kent County agreed to create a performance-based child welfare system, which provides a financial cap on Kent County's annual cost. Beginning on October 1, 2018, the county will annually provide $4.5 million to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, which is the five-year average of net out-of-home child welfare expenditures. This will be the county's annual contribution for out-of-home child welfare costs from this point forward. These funds are not subject to 50 percent reimbursement. For 2018, funding will be provided to the following agencies to provide necessary services for children in the juvenile, justice, and/or child welfare systems. Arbor Circle, Catholic Charities West Michigan, School to Career Progressions, House Arrest, Cole Williams, Court Appointed Special Advocates Program, DAA Blodgett St. John's, Dr. Wykes, Network 180, Wells Springs Lutheran Services, and YWCA West Central Michigan.
So moved. Okay. Is there support? No support, thank you. Questions, discussions, and comments? Yes, Commissioner May?
Well, so the five, or the $4.5 million, when you look down at the cost-funding recommendation, we're going to get $27.7 million from the 2007 Child Care Fund, and then $11 million plus $16 million, which is the 27. But five of that 16 is basically what we're providing. We don't have to provide it next year.
No. No. We will have to provide the five, the $4.5 next year.
Oh, annually provide. You did say that, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's an ongoing expenditure as a result of the five-year average that we, that the actuaries identified that we would have to cover for the next, as long as the pilot is okay. At some point in time, they will hopefully say Kent County's pilot has been effective, the outcomes are effective, and they may in fact roll that into other counties. I know Wayne County is one of the counties that's up next. But now until the foreseeable future, it's based on how the results are. $4.5 million will be a continuing cost until at some point they determine whether or not that number should go up or go down based on the experience.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Talon?
Sure. The older I get, the less I remember, but I feel like in the past, the division between the Circuit Court side and the DHS side has been balanced, or is that an incorrect memory? And where I'm going here is that it looks like more than, more than two-thirds of this budget is on the Circuit Court side.
It's always been that way. It's pretty much been a larger number. Juvenile detention and all of the probation officers that are assigned to these youth, that number's a lot higher. It's been, always been that way, Jim, my knowledge, unless there's someone out in the audience that can tell me something differently. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Walmac?
Yes, we mentioned about this pilot and some of the outcomes. Is there anyone that can be more specific on some of the outcomes we'll be looking for?
Yes. I'll have Matthew Van Zetten, if that's okay with you.
Yes.
Thanks, Commissioner. A number of the outcomes that are being looked at are related to permanence and timeliness to permanence, but also looking at if we can return children to their biological homes faster as well, reduction in the number of caseworkers a child has when they're in the system, time to adoption, time to get their physicals in a timely way, any medical health services they have in a timely way that are needed. So there's a series of performance measures, key performance indicators, and I'll talk about that more in a special order business with the Board. But that's been designed by the state of Michigan and the private agencies to create, and will be measured through a contract with Westat that the state has put together, a third-party evaluator. So we should be having strong measurements of whether we see those things or not, whether children are getting returned home sooner, adopted sooner, whether they have more consistency in their services. So those are the kind of indicators we're looking at.
When these children, some that may be removed from their home, or even those that are staying in their home, but definitely if the state is involved, and if people are getting involved and there's, you know, some problems there, are there any monitors to make sure that as they transfer from home, or whether they're still at home, or they transfer through the system to foster care, that they're not missing their education, and that, you know, they got the extra counsel so they can be focused? Because even if they're there, it's hard to be focused when you're transferring out your parents through the system.
Matthew, can we have Saveta Selva-Johnson come on and get into that?
Yeah. Just so they don't have any large missing blocks in their education during that year.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioner. Another key performance indicator is about stability of education. So as we partner with private agencies, we try to assess which agency has the best home located within that child's removal area or their school of origin. So we do try to maintain that consistency for them, and really look at the trauma around a removal, or the trauma of involvement with a CPS investigation, and do things to try to involve systems of service to support and walk through those experiences with children and families.
Okay. Is there any estimate on when they're going through the system, do they miss any school, or is it weeks?
No, I would not, definitely not weeks. I think that we also have a component that's called educational planner. So as we launch this placement network hall, one of those components in terms of the completion of that process is educational information. So we're going to do what we can to make sure, even if there's a bus involved, someone is transporting that young person to school within that same week, if not the next day.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if either as part of the special order business or further on in the budget process, we could get a five-year look at the general fund portion of this with the breakout between Circuit and.
Sure. We could do that. So we'll add that to our follow-up questions from Finance Budget Review, I mean, the work session this morning, so that we have that next time, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wayman, just for those who might be watching at home, because these are recorded, can you just address how handled differently than our other budget processes, why this one's?
Okay. So the state of Michigan has three, at least today, we have three items on the docket, the Circuit Court, DHS Child Care Fund. These are funds that the state of Michigan budgets beginning October 1. Along with that, we also have the Friend of the Court, which is in the special project funds. And then we have Community Corrections. Those are all state-funded programs. Some of them are, like we talked about, are reimbursed 50/50. Some are not. There's a set amount that's given, for instance, Community Correction. There's a grant, it's more grant-based. So, but the 1-1 budgets are all general fund-related, it's on the county system. However, there are some programs and services that fall in different times of the year, the Community Development and Housing Budget, which you all are going to be having an opportunity to look at today. Those budgets, those states may differ based on the federal government's timeline. But for Child Care Fund, the Community Corrections, for the Friend of the Court, those budgets are an October 1 start date. So it's a bifurcated system. However, we are approving those within the same general timeframe for our budget process, for our timeline.
Wanted to throw that out there for those who might be wondering why now for these particular items. All right. Any other questions, comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to item number four, Community Corrections, 2017-18 Grant Agreement Provider Contracts and Appropriation. Wayman?
This is a recommendation to the Board to approve the grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Corrections, 2017-18 funding for the Office of Community Corrections, to appropriate $948,000 to the Community Corrections budget in the Special Revenue Fund, to authorize the Board chair or designate to execute the contracts with the proposed vendors, approve grant extensions, and changes within 15 percent of the original ward, subject to final review of the documents by corporate counsel. On June 22, 2017, the Board approved the Community Corrections Comprehensive Plan and Application under PA 511 of 1988, which provides grant funding from the state to administer and appropriate programs that provide alternatives to incarceration for offenders. Funding will be provided to the following local programs: Alternative Directions, Court Services, Cognitive Behavioral Training Services, Homeward Bound, Burgwurst, Psychological Services, Arbor Circle, Family Outreach Center, Reality Counseling, Women's Resource Center, Heineres Services, Network 180, Catholic Charities, and the 61st District Court. Funds have also been included in the Office of Community Correction budget for the Kent County Court Services Department and the Kent County Sheriff's Department Correctional Facility. The grant period is October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2018. It is expected that the grant is renewable.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Moved and supported. Questions, comments? Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you. Thank you. In our work session, we talked a little bit about the correctional facility. What amount in this here grant is for the Sheriff's Department Correctional Facility, and what is it covered?
Let's see.
We're going to have.
Who's coming up? Come on up. Please announce who you are.
My name's Andrew Voorheek. I'm one of the planners for the Kent County Office of Community Corrections. So we allocate approximately $5,220 to the Kent County Correctional Facility to help with assessments for OUIL third offenders.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner May?
But I get, I mean, that's just a subcontract that you have. So the programs that you provide are not, are what's listed here.
Yes.
The $5,000 give to the correction, it's just basically buying a service from them.
Yes. Yep. So it's to pay for approximately, based on the per diem rate that the state allows for that contract, it allows us to pay for essentially five days in jail for those eligible OUIL third offenders to be housed there so that an assessment can be done, those sorts of things.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talon?
This is not a question or an issue that's specific to this piece, but I do want to raise the issue of the so what both for, well, for all three of the action items that we've got here. And that is, we're approving funding for programs, but we really don't know from the, from what's in front of us, whether those programs are making a difference. And we talk about performance-based budgeting. If we're really doing performance-based budgeting, I think we ought to be seeing and tying and directly tying budgeting to performance. There is nothing in either the DHS piece, or this piece, or the health piece on what the outcomes are, on what the performance of what we're funding.
Well.
And so I just want to encourage us to keep thinking about tying.
Yeah, that's what he's talking about. Yeah. He's, we can, we, yeah.
They all have them, I know.
Yeah, we all have them. What he wants is for them to be seen, shown, as we make the budget approvals, to see what that looks like, right?
And it's not just what I want, it's what we have said in our pushing for performance-based budgeting, what we intend to do. We haven't, in my view, taken that final step of actually tying those things to the budget that we're approving here. So I know, being a member of the committee, that we have all kinds of outcomes that we're looking at in community corrections, but we really ought to be seeing that and being able to tie that.
Okay.
So it's just a general observation.
Okay. We'll see what we can do to help make that clear when we bring these forward in the future, Jim. Thank you.
Commissioner Walmac?
Yes, I'd like to agree with Commissioner Talon that seeing some of the outcomes from these programs is very important and essential to us making our decisions. Of course, I'll be supporting this today, but just in my community, I'm working trying to help about five ex-felons get employment. Three are looking for housing. And just making sure that some of these programs understand what the priorities are for these guys when they come out, when it comes to housing. We have apartments now that say no felons. Many apartment complexes are saying no felons, and there are some who are changing their policies, maybe after a person's been living there, and their new letter comes out next year, no felons. And these guys are being separated from their families, employment, they're finding many places. Most people in here know, I'm not the only one that knows, that many places, they won't even let a felon fill out an application. And as they come to my office and give me some of these concerns, it seems that if any of these programs can address those issues, for some reason, they don't know about it, or the outreach, these ex-felons may not be there the way it should be. But I'd definitely be supportive today, just I wanted to add that to what Mr. Talon said.
Commissioner Hennessy?
I appreciate what Commissioner Talon said as well, and having a corrections planner here is kind of interesting. I'd really like to know more, since that's almost $230,000 portion of this, you know, what you're doing, particularly with the jail utilization broadly, you know? Do you work with getting people bonded out more quickly and making sure that these steps are being taken? And, you know, it all goes in a circle, because the quicker we get people bonded out, the less liability we potentially have for their healthcare in the jail, and, you know, the cost circle just goes around. And I'm really curious to hear more, if I may.
Sure.
Yeah, he can give us a mention. Okay. So there's, we've measured success in our, our agency and with our programs. On the state side, we're required to report, you know, successful terminations, successful terminations, or unsuccessful terminations from our programming. We report that on a monthly basis. We're also supposed to report in the various mid-year or the end-of-the-year reports to our state funder, how our programs are doing, some of the same questions that many of the commissioners are today. So in the last year's year-end report, we were able to do some analysis and show that, you know, a successful termination from a program reduces recidivism by so many times. For example, many of our programs, we can show, reduces the odds of recidivism for a successful completion in the future, which means they're either not being convicted again, or they're not being arrested again in the future. We have that analysis internally for our own programs. We've also assisted with a lot of the jail programming that's in the county jail at this time, especially with the reentry pod and the evaluations that have been done on that end. And those evaluations of which some of the programming that we fund have shown some significant increases in reducing recidivism. So many of the concerns, the issues that you're raising are things that we're already doing, at least in community corrections. So we've been able to show that some of those programs reduce recidivism, do actually work in helping those individuals avoid future criminal behavior.
Okay. Follow-up or?
Do you work with making sure people are getting out of the jail on a timely basis, such as to be able to post-bond?
Yes. Part of our programming that we fund at this time is pre-trial services. So in our pre-trial department is one of the better-known in the state. Timothy Bohice, who's the manager, that has one of the better-known pre-trial managers in the state in terms of advocating for pre-trial release, increasing bonds, and working to ensure that people are released on a timely manner. So, and we've been able to show through our information that the work that is being done on that end has increased the number of bonds, the time between arrest to that bonding for those individuals, so.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to item five, Community Development/Housing Commission, Kent County Community Action Positions. Wayman?
This is a request to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to adopt the positions for Kent County Community Action. In August 2017, the county and Grand Rapids approved the First Amendment to its Municipal Partnership Act agreement, recognizing the county of Kent as the community action for the county effective October 1, 2017. The attached document identifies revised organizational chart and position control, which includes employees from the Community Development Housing Commission. Total proposed FTE is 3.25, of which 31 are full-time and three are part-time. In the event state or federal funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions will be eliminated unless continuation funding is approved pursuant to the policy on grants, contracts, and donations. This item was recommended for approval by the Legislative and Human Resources Committee at its September 12, 2017 meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And supported by Commissioner Hennessy. Questions, comments, and discussion? Commissioner May?
Well, this represents, I think, 22 of those 32 are transferred over positions from the city.
From CAA, correct.
From the CAA, yeah, right. But the funding comes with them, and so it's, yes. Culmination of a lot of work. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That takes us to item six on our agenda, which is for health, health fund appropriation for 2017-2018. Wayman?
This is a recommendation to the Board to accept and appropriate $20.2 million to the 2017-18 health fund budget, authorize the Board chair or designate to execute the agreements, and within 15 percent of the original wards, and to approve the grant extensions. The attached list identifies the various health department programs and the applicable funding sources for each program for the budget year 2017-18. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services funds the comprehensive planning and budget contract, which is an annual agreement between the state and the county, $23.1 million. The agreements provide certain required public health services, including immunizations, infections, and sexually transmitted disease control, hearing and vision screening, food protection, drinking water, and onsite sewage monitoring, as well as several other state-funded programs. The Health Department administers several other grant programs totaling $2.1 million. These grant programs include the racial and ethnic approaches to community health, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the Refugee Grant Program through Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse Prevention Programs from Lakeshore Regional Entity and Network 180, the Strong Beginnings Program through Spectrum Health, a Healthy Lifestyle Grant through the YMCA, and Environmental Health Inspection Programs through the State of Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. The Health Department also provides services that are funded mainly through fees and general fund support. These programs include the animal shelter, health education and promotion, and laboratory services. The total funding for these programs is $3.9 million. This request- This request includes three full-time sanitary positions recommended by the Legislative and Human Resources Committee at its September 12, 2017 meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Talon. Questions, comments, and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. I guess, what I'm, one thing I'm trying to figure out here is my assumption, perhaps incorrect, was that this was related to state funding cycles. But I'm also seeing non-state portions of it, like Network 180, Spectrum Health, YMCA. Why are those in here rather than in the general budget? I guess my assumption was this was related to the portion of next year's budget that needs to be approved now.
Yeah, these dollars, the state of Michigan also provides funding through the LRE, but the, those dates are also on the same timeline, October 1. So those funds are received directly from the state, they flow through the Health Department to the various agencies who are responsible for delivery of the programs.
Probably similar for Strong Beginnings, is that a pass-through that goes from to Spectrum Health?
Correct.
And the healthy lifestyle grant?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Hennessy?
Well, I'm a little curious as to the breakdown on the funding for the three full-time sanitary positions that would be added, and how much will come out of general fund? Is there state funding behind it, or the fees that we would receive? I was just unsure about how the costs associated with that breakdown.
Chair, we can have Gail just speak to the break.
Good morning, I'm Gail Brink, I'm the Finance Director at the Health Department. The majority of the funding from those positions is coming from fees. As you know, our services have greatly increased over the, you know, with the economic upturn, if you wanted to call it, in the environmental health side. That has significantly increased the amount of services we've provided. So the, I would say about 80% of those is covered by the fees and about 20% from the general fund.
Just as a follow-up, do sanitarians inspect wells?
Yes.
Okay, and?
And, and also, I mean, two of those sanitary positions are on the food side, so they do the restaurant inspections. And one of the sanitary positions is on the, what we call the general side, and that's the well and water inspections.
I'll just add from a point on my, from my district, is that I've had my fair share of phone calls from people being held up from a significant time period in this area. I believe it's a good addition and needs to be done.
Our goal is to try to get that to about a 10-day wait, waiting period, where, you know, we're a little more than that right now.
You are.
Probably why you are getting phone calls, exactly.
Yes, that's why I'm getting phone calls. Commissioner Hennessy?
Well, what does 20% amount to, dollar-wise, that would be covered under the county general?
About 40, about $45,000. The total cost of the three positions is about $225,000, so 20% would be about $45,000.
That includes offense as well as salary?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Voorhees?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, for mentioning, please. I too have been getting complaints about the waiting time. We're in a, we're in a growth spurt here, and we've got to make sure that, as government, we're helping it, not hindering it, and I think we're hindering it in our delays at times. What, if I could, what percentage increase is this budget over last year's budget?
In total, the general fund component of it?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, we have, and grants and all of, and Medicaid reimbursements and all of that too.
How many more dollars are you spending this year than you did last year?
About, oh, I'm trying to think, about one, I'm, $1.2 million?
$1.2?
That's not general fund, though. That would be in fees, and, you know, that's all of the total expenditures. If you're looking at just the, you know, general fund component.
Of a $29 billion budget?
Yeah, our, last year was about $28 million.
So you're up $1 billion.
$1 million.
$1 million.
$28 million.
Hold on here.
Hold on, miracle, my phone's going to go right off the line.
All right, that, that, I was on the federal-
One less zero.
I was on the federal budget. So you're up about $1 million, that would be less than what percentage, Chair?
Less than-
Five.
About five percent.
About five percent.
Yeah.
That's healthy. But when people say, well, how come? Well, I said their budget's pinched, but I, I want to know a little more, well, what, you know, dollars are, if we're increasing the budget in there, we shouldn't be falling that far.
You may also want to speak to the fact that we are getting more questions and, and requests to help with environmental issues.
Oh, absolutely. You probably are well aware of the vapor intrusions and also the, the water contamination, the groundwater water contaminations, and on the environmental health side, and that is taking a significant amount of time, of staff time, you know, to follow through on those. We have the one with Wolverine Worldwide right now. You know, we have the vapor intrusions and, and it's, it's constantly some, you know, something as the DEQ is identifying more and more of those properties, there's a lot of them in Kent County.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy with a follow-up?
I do. Is this budget in any way predicated on other, on, on fees that will be brought to us later?
No, there are no fee increases built into this budget, and we are not anticipating to do that. As you know, probably six months ago, we brought forward a, a request to increase the fees on the animal shelter side for licensing. That was the last fee that is built into here, because those were approved, but there are no fee increases built into it.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to item number seven, which is Commissioner miscellaneous. Is there any miscellaneous for the Finance and Physical Resources Committee this morning? Okay, seeing none, then we will go to adjournment. We adjourned, the next meeting date is Tuesday, October 3, 2017. Thank you very much.